...in a nonprofit that's focused on revitalizing downtown Lakeview. Last year was our first year as a registered nonprofit and we requested funds of 2,500 from the town in order to cover our general operating expenses including insurance. With that, we managed to do a number of events and other projects here in town, including Festival of Trees, the historic poster project, and a number of supporting a number of other events. I'm here today because it's a new fiscal year for us and so we are requesting again 2,500 to continue those projects and take on some new work, including looking at restoring the Alger Theater. So the request is 2,500 and that goes, that covers our insurance and some of our general operating expenses so that we can take on a number, a number of different projects, including the Alger Theater project, Festival of Trees, and Daily Days.
So specifically, either it will be used for insurance or you have a specific?
The majority of it would be used for our board insurance and our liability insurance for events.
For your, what was the first thing you said?
Board insurance.
Okay.
Those two insurances are wrapped in with each other this year for the most part. But whatever isn't used for that will go to general operating expenses, things like printing out flyers or postage, that sort of thing. But that's, that's very minimal. The majority will be for insurance.
We will, we can't really make a decision today because we did not have an agenda, but we'll take it under advisement and get back to you on our decision.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, could I?
Yes.
Thanks Will for the presentation there. But I just was wondering if the letter from Ron Nichols, President of the Lakeview Community Partnership that we had in our packet?
Yes.
Is, there's a, it says increases the number of blank. I just was wondering if anyone knew that increased.
Good question.
I, it's something.
But no, what did you say?
The first paragraph of.
Which increase the number of blank.
That's all right. We can, we can get with Mr. Nichols and find out, but I just was wondering.
Well, I may be able to answer that question.
Okay, all right.
Take a look.
Okay. And yeah, I, it sounds like expenses and then.
Oh. The number of, I believe that was visitations downtown or something along those lines.
Okay, so it's number, okay. Count, number, count of first.
Of, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. Appreciate it, Will.
Um, Carmen Dick, is she, what's her name? Okay, hi. Please stand and give me your name for the Carmen Dick. Thank you. Um, I am here, I live down at the very end of Center Street between Devoe, and I'm here to request a variance to keep a horse down there. Um, we've had, I have, you know, I've checked with all of my neighbors, I've got a map here if any of you aren't familiar with the, the total area, but I have nobody on either side of me, nobody behind me, but horse pastures with horses in it. We've got a huge lot and a shelter and the fencing and everything for the horse in there. Um, and we keep it clean. Apparently I have one neighbor that has a problem with that, but other than that. And it's my daughter, the, my daughter's rodeo horse, so she's, I don't have anywhere else to really keep it.
Okay, well, we can take that under advisement also, but we really can't make a decision today.
Right.
It's something we will need to discuss in council, so we will need to do that as of right now you are in violation of the city ordinance concerning livestock, so we will try to get back to you as soon as possible on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Jenny. Okay, um, hey, Mr. and Mrs. Chrisley, are they here? No? Okay. We'll move on to communications. Um, communications comments and informational items. I think there's several things in there. We'll have time to look through those if you have any questions on any of that.
The Enterprise owns another Oregon tax incentives workshop. I wish they would have had that over the last eight years. I did get some schooling from, from Art Fish who was kind of the guru at the State Capitol and learned a lot through the eBridrova process as well as the Red Rock process. And I think it was very instrumental. I'm glad to see this go ahead. It's finally getting involved in.
Are you, are you interested in going to the meeting?
Well, it's, it's tomorrow and I didn't know about it until just last night when I picked the packet up, so I, I don't know.
And where do you want to go either? I might have to go home to my other house. Okay.
Uh, I, let me see what tomorrow morning brings and.
Well, yeah, if you want to go away, we will be glad to have your representative.
Okay. But I'm glad to see it go ahead, get involved in.
Darwin, are you going to it by chance?
There was this discussion with me and Ginger about me attending as she's not able to go as well. I served for a time as the Enterprise's chairman for Lakeview and the county and I am not planning on going, but I'll, I'm gonna check with the commissioner and see if they would like me to go in place. We'll see.
So either one of you decided to go, that's, yeah. Get some information.
Sounds like we're the best at making something like that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the communications items then? Okay. We will move on to the cabinet reports, committee minutes, updates. Uh, this is Chief. Do we have any additional information to add?
I do, and I apologize for the late reports. I thought it had already been done while I was out of town last week. So updates would also be that Officer Tippman and I were both out of town on training last week. We will, on the next report, add additional information about what those are.
Okay.
Are. Mine specifically is the leadership supervisory training I need for my first level of certification moving forward to become certified chief. We did last week purchase a police vehicle from City of Salem. It's a 2011 Chevy Tahoe, two-wheel drive. It's got about 100,000 miles on it. Seems to be in very good condition. Guys are excited about it, even though they're two-wheel drive, they're actually excited about having, you know, newer updated vehicles. I'm also working with the Tulip Tribal Police in Washington. They're surplusing four police vehicles. I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this.
Not really.
I just got news 10 minutes before I came here. So they're surplusing some police vehicles. They, they had actually scheduled them to be crushed or trying to interrupt that process. They're 2005 Ford Explorers, four-wheel drive. All of them have over 100,000 miles on them. He said that a couple of them had some check-ins and like stuff going on. He's not sure why, but they may be willing to give those to us.
Free of charge?
Fully equipped, free of charge. So I, I, I got off the phone with Ken Johnson, what, he's a sergeant up there in Tulip and he said that I needed to send the official letter of request and then he would address it with the chief, but they've recently just found out that they have the ability to either donate or sell these to other agencies and are, sounds like they're very excited to work with us.
Okay.
And then the last thing I wanted to address is on South Fourth Street in front of the Fremont School, the school has asked previously that they were able to block off a portion of that street during the day for the traffic of kids being picked up and dropped off in the morning and afternoon, which was grounded by the council. I don't think anything was ever official. I would like to, or I suggest that we turn that into a one-way street and that would be between, what is it, H and I?
I think so, yes.
On South Fourth. And just have that be, in the mornings when I'm patrolling and I'm there and I'm present, there doesn't seem to be really any issues. Parents have gotten used to the fact that it's blocked and it's one-way. It sounds like where we're starting to get some issues is in the afternoons when the bus drops off or picks up for the school on the west side. And so then it sort of becomes a congested mess. So I think if we just made that officially a one-way street all the time, which would have very little impact up there, a lot of three residences on that block.
There's a lot, a big part of the year that it's, you know, not used for this particular year, so anyway, we will, we did put that on our agenda and discuss it.
Okay. And for, for discussion, till next week?
Yeah.
Unless, no, we can't do it today, so, okay. Uh, how much, I was gonna ask you when you were talking about the vehicles, how many new vehicles or new old vehicles are you wanting to get?
Our fleet is getting pretty old. There's quite a bit of liability that comes with the, the age of our vehicles. Um, you know, I'd like to see if, depending on, especially if we can get some for free, you know, that would definitely increase the amount that we would want to get, but I mean, I'd like to start seeing us rotate out some of our old fleet. We've sold a few vehicles already. We've sold three and that brought in almost 40, $500 in income. I've got the, the Suburban that Jeff used to drive. I'm gonna get that up on auction and get it sold to increase our income as well. And so, you know, if we could get, I know Salem has two more of these Tahos and we're getting them for about $3,000 apiece, which is really reasonable. That's fully equipped with light bars and sirens and everything. We put in a radio and they're operational.
Right.
Good tires and, you know, well-maintained vehicles, you know, so I'd like to see if we could get, you know, maybe two or three of those and then I think we could supplement everything else with the Expeditions that I may be able to get, or the Explorers I may be able to get those, Washington.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good, good work.
And Roberta was essential in getting us the ones from Salem, so.
Uh, we have the 911, Mr. Nichols absent today and Lakeview Fire Department, Dennis is absent today. Anderson Engineering, there's a report on, from him on, still working on the Head Start building and seems like things are going well there so far on time. And manager's report.
Very good. Thank you.
I just had asked Robert about this earlier. We were on page one, the fourth paragraph down and Head Start funding that we had talked about in the past and when that might be coming forth. They are still, I think they are still kind of deciding how much of the funds they are needing.
Right. For the Head Start?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. In fact, we should have an agreement before us at the next meeting. I thought it was gonna be last meeting, but we're, originally the resolution was to loan up to $50,000, but they're not gonna need that much, so we want to kind of lower that number, so.
Looks like they're coming along good with the building.
Yeah.
It's gonna be nice.
Okay. Excellent. Consent calendar, we have the regular session minutes from October 11th, AP September through November 2016, and payroll September 2016 and November 2016. Any questions or questions to be made?
I'm gonna have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So a motion and second to approve the consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Now, mayor council updates. I did attend the PAC meeting that Roberta was, went to also with me and she discussed in her report the problems they'd had with the geothermal, what are they?
Valves.
Valves, yes.
Mine.
Something that goes around. Anyway, and so, you know, that's been kind of discussed and you did be checking ours here too, but also they, you know, were elected the new chairman for next year and I'd just really say since I've been on the PAC thing, I've been impressed with the, with the prison itself and how it's run and the real efforts made by the staff there and the superintendent to help people to achieve something when they get out with education, enhanced visits with family and things where they open up and have the family, the family town with children and activities for them all to maintain, you know, even though they're, many of them live far away in the state, maintain contacts with their families and job training, et cetera. Nationally, Oregon's prisons are rated very high as far as recidivism goes. Minnesota and Oregon are the two states that have the best systems in the United States. So anyway, I think they have done a good job. I also attended a Lake County Public Safety meeting and once again, the update on the drug court is good. There's 15 people in the program. They've had seven graduates and only one relapsed so far in the program. I think it's been around for about 18 months and so that's really encouraging and they, these people are supervised while they're in the drug court and afterward for a period of time, UAs, very close supervision and group meetings. So it, I think overall it's a, so far been a very successful program. Sharon?
The nice thing about that is it keeps people in our community with their families and that becomes real precious to them and so they don't want to lose that.
Right.
And so that, I think, is work. And then the other thing that I think happens is that within that group of 15 people, whatever, however that's made up at any given time, they become very supportive of one another.
Exactly.
Act as, you know, you can call me if you need help and they, they'll go get somebody or they'll talk to them and so it's very supportive within its own group as well as, as all the meetings and the tests they have to take. So I think it's pretty successful and maybe even statewide.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that, I agree that their system is wonderful and they're constantly evolving and changing and I know that they've changed their UA setup recently and gone to a random instead of a structured three days and I think that's gonna help and, you know, but they're, they're constantly evolving the way it works and, you know, the feedback I'm getting from the people that are involved is, you know, this is the first time in their life that they ever felt truly supported, you know, in their recovery. And so we all understand that addicts are addicts and they're gonna have relapses, you know, but, you know, the recovery process is, is long and they're finally starting to feel that they're being supported and that they have a, a productive treatment system.
And also the, even though they may graduate from the drug program, many of them are also continuing on approbation.
Oh, yeah, they'll be on because they have suspended.
And so, you know, there's random drug trials that are done and other supervision besides that, so it's, it's, I think, and I think this program here is working very successfully. Okay. Sharon, anything else to add?
Uh, the Chamber of Commerce is holding interviews tomorrow for opening, for open positions and as chamber member, we're continuing with the gala development and all the plans that we have for that, so that's gonna be our big thing, June, January 17th, I believe, so I expect to see all of you there.
Ray?
Um, the Christmas committee met last week and right now the, the small trees for the planners are down at the school. Amy got, talked to them, I took them down there. We have lights for the trees up on, or the decorations on East Street and I think they're gonna work out pretty good. I just gotta get with Jeff and then find out if we're never gonna start putting them up so we get the lights on. The other thing I have is I've noticed stuff on Facebook, people were complaining about the potholes. Apparently they got, they got filled, I don't know if the state filled them or if the city filled them or the city did. Well, job well done there because I went over and it was nice.
Yeah. The point is, they are there, we know they're there.
Yeah.
And you probably shouldn't be hitting the high speed because you're gonna, but you see people do it all the time. They kind of rev up to get like, maybe what, they're gonna fly over them? And then they go kachunk and then they're mad.
Well, I think.
There's a stop sign there too, right? Yeah, a couple of them.
Three.
Yeah, three. But I think our problem that we're gonna have is trying to find out when we do get ready to pave that, is do it before logging season so we don't fight with the log trucks.
Or them, maybe in the first place.
Yeah. Maybe we get the metal to donate to the middle.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Darwin?
Uh, mayor reported on this in a, in a report already, but Red Rock was approved by the state, so that's continue to go forward and hopefully groundbreaking will be soon. Attend the chip meeting and continue to encourage people to, you know, make sure you're, you know, making yourself known of the services that they provide for the community and, uh, as for, part of our information items that we got was some stuff from Hardy County GIS Department, Bryce Smurfs, coordinator there. As you may know, I previously served in Hardy County as their assistant planning director there and worked with Bryce the whole time I was in Hardy County and we have an OEM contract for the 911 services that they provide. Jill Sol was the contractor and anyways, this information that Bryce provided is, is something that, that as we continue forward in the next couple of months, I would encourage us all to be educated, come talk to me a little bit more and work with Scotty on, on trying to, to bring this more to a local level. Bryce would, in my vision, would be able to service us for a time and then eventually work on providing GIS services full-time here at the county.
Through Hardy or?
No.
Our own setup?
Yeah, our own setup. And so the town, the county will work more on this, big goals with the $700 contracts to Lake County to do that maintenance and stuff, but, well, I'm, I'm not trying to beat the cart before the horse on this discussion, but look at what Bryce has provided and then come talk to me some more and we'll, I'll share some more information with you on the services that he can provide and then eventually build us a GIS program locally that will help all agencies who will have GIS needs, which is not the use, so.
Good. Okay.
The fact that the Department of Land's approval of the urban drug bounty, that is exciting news for Lakeview with the community service fees waiting in the realm, perhaps a couple of years away before we see those, but it couldn't have ever taken place if Red Rock wouldn't get one, so hopefully this is fixed and kicked off and will be something that fruition soon. And the other thing, the community, I'm sorry, the county emergency prepared just had a meeting a couple, well, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, but they canceled the meeting on Tuesday and then had one on Thursday and I believe that the chief and Roberta were both there. They forwarded me some information on it from the litigation plan. Okay, but you, okay. You forwarded me information from, I guess, that and so I appreciate that. That's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you.
I did attend that meeting, it wasn't much new discussed, but we'll meet again and then we'll discuss the natural hazard mitigation plan to have that reviewed by the 22nd meeting.
Roberta, anything else that you have to add?
Nothing under old business, under new business, we have a resolution which is number 885 in the matter of extending support services with Executive Information Services, Inc., which is EIS, which offers support services for the police, fire, and dispatch services.
Cool. I'm gonna give a little better, actually, you should have that.
The one on your table.
Yeah. What it is, is it between the, the dispatchers, the police department, we have a system over there that we renew every year to provide services for the dispatching, the dispatching services, so we just need to renew that.
Look like, you notice in there the same.
Same rate, lax, very. Yes. There were no changes, Sharon.
Is there a resolution on all that?
It's 885. Any, any questions?
I would make a motion that we approve resolution number 885 in the matter of extending support services with Executive Information Services, Inc., EIS. And if we could just, on the bottom, make it pass by the town council by a majority vote?
Oh.
Or is that, I've never seen that wording, maybe we should use a common council, I don't know.
Uh, well, no, that's, that's been corrected.
Oh, okay.
If you look at it, it says also the NISA there.
No, 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 I have to correct it, but at the bottom it's passed by the common council, maybe that's.
Well, mine says pass it up at Lakeview Town Council during its regular meeting.
It's the next line down.
Passed by the council, okay.
Do we want to?
I mean, if common is appropriate, that's fine, it's just new to me, so.
Well, I, I look back at our previous resolutions, it's all been town council. I think I was just missing it as well.
Oh, on the council, so the second one should be changed as.
Just be town council, yeah, that's.
By the council.
With, with that change, I would make a motion that we approve resolution number 885.
In a second.
We have a motion in a second. To approve resolution, renovation, yeah, resolution number 885 in the matter of extending support services with Executive Information Services, Inc., EIS with correction. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Any other additional comments or questions from anyone? Okay, with that, we will close the meeting.
One, one, yes, go ahead, one, sorry. I think that, Sharon and I were talking a minute on the phone, that we needed to maybe have a work session in the near future, like next week, like next Tuesday. There's a lot of things that I need some direction with council on and I think it would be really good to just start meeting and having a work session and kind of identifying areas we need to go for, you know, look at. I know there's policies and procedures that need to be implemented and so I would like your input before I start doing a lot of things, but I, I think a work session where we just kind of talk and figure out.
Yeah. The direction you want to go. Before, after, just the work session. Right. The work session, which would be next Tuesday, not a regular meeting date, but I wanted to, we kind of wanted to do it before Thanksgiving and that's two weeks, that next meeting is two weeks away and so, well, I would say 4:00 our usual meeting time.
Or is it the 15th? Is that?
It is the 15th, yeah.
Well, that works.
And schedule an hour to an hour and a half because we both have kind of lists of things we need to go through.
And if there's something that you would like to add, just let us know or let Amy know, she'll be happy to put that on there right now.
And what time are you looking at?
4:00.
Mm-hmm. Our regular meeting time.
4:00 November 15th.
Yes. Will you be here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. With that, we will close our meeting at 4:31. Thank you for attending. Go watch the election.
Yeah.
Go vote.
I think there's gonna be this many people there, so I just kind of got ready for a session, you know.
There's no waiting, are there?
There's waiting, waiting.
I just, my toddler, I didn't have the space.
Yeah, so I had, I mean, it's just.
You're stuck for it.
Yeah.
I mean, how, so just to be like, you presented, like, in the, in the, I think.
Then you can tell me about privilege.
So your first note was for livestock at town, first time I was meeting.